We have to build that.
I'd see that kind of deep. Oh, couldn't really get it. Those are the two little gears that.
Yeah.
Yeah. They got big. They said it's hopeless. Yeah. 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 They said it's hopeless. Yeah. Yeah. They got big. Uh, okay. They said it's hopeless. Yeah. 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 They got big. Uh, okay. They said it's hopeless. Yeah. 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 What do you say? What do you say? Yeah. 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 Kind of a nice kid. She was just like. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. 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 Maybe he's a crazy one. Yeah. He takes her to sleep too. He's too. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
We'll call tonight's meeting with Lloyd City Council over. Mandy, would you take a roll call for you?
Cam Miller.
Here.
Bob Richard.
Here.
Matt Addy.
Here.
Rick Brown.
Yep.
Tony Gengler.
Yes.
Robert Peterson.
Yep.
Floyd Latrell.
Present.
Thank you. Did stand for the indication. And let me.
Heavenly Father be with us tonight as we conduct our business for the city of Lloyd. Give us the wisdom to make the proper decisions. We want to thank you for the moisture that we're about to receive and the wonderful crops that we have out in the field. We thank you and we want you to be with our law enforcement and our armed forces as they protect us and our great nation. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lloyd, do you have anything?
Uh, no sir. I just have nothing.
Thank you.
I'd like to take that opportunity to praise our police department for the awesome work they did on, in that murder. I know that they didn't do it all, but they were helping out. There they deserve to be corrected. That's great.
We're pretty fortunate to have what we have. Just to get out and support the fair. Let me give it to her. Let her display. Same thing. Okay. The fair. Uh. Okay. Again, uh, everybody, let's get out and enjoy the fair. We want to help there. Have good attendance. Looks like we're going to have cooler weather, which is always nice for the fair. For Matt and his food and. Katie, do you have anything?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Glenn?
I'll just, I'll hold it for the work session.
Okay.
First item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. It's a delightful first council meeting on appropriation aid page.
I would move that we approve the appropriation on the since ours, the consent agenda is tired.
True. It was made by Councilman Latrell that we approved the consent agenda in its entirety. But second, second by Councilman Peterson. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Mandy, would you take a roll call vote please?
Gengler?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Brown?
Here.
Latrell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Addy?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yep.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is resolution 2015-16 unfit structure at 709 West Court Street. Any comments, questions? First item?
Is that the house right at the crib? The crib here. What's done? What's the house?
Second house east of the crib on the south side.
On the south side.
Yeah.
Charles lives in the west house, correct?
That's, that's, that's correct. Yeah.
Good.
And this is, this is just to set the time and date for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you Chris. I have a motion to accept resolution 2015-16. It moved by Councilman Richard that we approve resolution 2015-16. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Mandy, would you take a roll call vote please?
Richard?
Yes.
Gengler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Here.
Addy?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is resolution 2015-17 bobcat lease.
I'm getting the bobcat. Isn't this lease just carried on?
Correct. Every year we roll it over and for whatever reason the company wants a resolution from the council every time, every year to renew the lease.
Is this the one on the power plant?
Power plant, yeah. We only, we have one also transportation. Basically it's something so.
You have to do one every year. Second question has been made by Councilman Miller that we approve resolution 2015-17 bobcat lease. Second by Councilman Brown. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Mandy, would you take a roll call vote please?
Brown?
Here.
Addy?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gengler?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Question carries. Next item on the agenda is the formal actions. It's the 2016 budget hearing publication. Glenn, you want to go say?
Yeah, I remember last time we met, we discussed the state budget, the royal line item budget. What it boils down to is what you publish before you have a hearing, you have to have this ten day, or at least ten days, a budget summary which publishes your mill levy. Once you've done that, you can, uh, you can adopt a lower mill levy, but you cannot exceed that object. So that 55.037 mill levy at the end of the paper there on page 28 in your state budget is the mill levy published. Of course, this is actually what you do publish because that's the time and date for the public hearing for the budget. So if anyone wants to come and speak on the budget, that's equally is a, you can. We don't get a lot of people to do that, but it makes people aware that we are having a hearing and they can come and pick up copyrights of our budget that we gave them in this state. And we get people to do that and look it over whenever they have any questions. If you have staff or come to the, come to the meeting, come to the hearing and they have their opportunity to voice their concerns. So that's what the purpose of this is here tonight especially. Get approval to publish this. Set your hearing date and set the mill levy.
Yeah, if we publish this, then we can always go down, but we can't.
We're down.
As an object. Any questions for?
Mayor, I move to move the question here for publication.
It's been moved by Councilman Addy that we approve the budgetary publication. It's second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Richard. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Schwab Eaton Safe Routes to School Engineering Contract in the amount not to exceed $35,000.
Is that a grant?
Yes, that, that is a Safe Routes to School grant that we got through Department of Transportation. We haven't got a contract on yet because their director, the person that used to handle that contract no longer is with them. So it's a person doing, and that's a little personnel shortage down at K14. But anyway, given the nature of this and the challenges that we see, and talking with Stuart, we thought we might want to get on this and do some preliminary engineering. And given the fact that we know we take a little while here to get these on K14, some other projects, you know, to do a design of this and kind of get out in front of it. This won't be constructed until 2060. That'll be, so it'll be coming at us actually next year. But we might, we might want to get this out, publicize what we're doing, how we're doing it. We do it far in advance so people can add a lot publicly put on it because it'll affect people's property as you hear that traffic, those who are connected to schools. So we want to get as much out of information as quickly as we can and accurate and willing before we ever start thinking, well, aren't anybody doing anything out there? So that's why it's coming this early before we actually get a contract.
Get easements or anything for this?
Well, actually, we go down our existing right of way. So, but again, you know, it would be impacting people's front yards and things like that. So we have to get an easement system. Yeah, I understand because you already have, you already have a certain right of way for where the streets are right now. So that's what we intend to use.
It's a matching grant. I don't remember the exact number, but those grant, we got to put in so much money.
Yeah, they're like 200,000 or 50,000.
Does, does this 35,000 apply to what we have to come up with on this?
Um, I don't think so. I think the preliminary engineering is actually our portion of this.
So we'll have this plus?
Plus, and when they get into the construction, they'll match that.
Or a matching portion of the?
That's usually what the K14 works with. It's, um, Safe Routes to School or like K14 project, which is the same way. Their match is just a construction.
It's about a fourth?
Yeah.
A third?
Well, there's like 200,000 or like 50,000. So it's like a fourth.
Twenty-some, maybe some thousand.
Yeah, well, yes, I mean, that would be great. So it's about three to four. Which is where they usually, you know, that's what we'll end up with on K14 pretty much. That's all said and done. So that's the way the general work goes on. So we usually cover the engineering.
Glenn, we, there's a little bit about this today, but who'll do the negotiating then with the landowners that they're going to put this on? I know we have the right of way, but I know there's some.
Well, we, as a city, well, like I said, what I envisioned is that we'll come over the plan and we'll have some public meetings. Pretty much what we did, well, like when we did with Mill Street up there, we had the street and the sewer and the, and all that in that project. We, we have meetings prior to that, you know, months in advance where we would show the layout and of course we'd have our engineer there and city staff or whatever. And we would explain what's going on. And people then can say, well, I like this, or maybe we can put this over here. I mean, I don't have, I'm not wedded to a certain route. We have a general idea where we want to go and the whole thing is to connect those schools and, and make that a safe route. That's all.
But as far as how we all do it, when we all do it?
With Greg Ritter and his committee behind all.
Yeah, the aware committee, yeah, I think heavily involved in, in, you know, talking with us about that promoting and helping sell the project. Because remember, they were the driving force behind the drive.
I mean, I think they ought to be there too.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, that's the thing. All parties involved, everybody who's involved in this from the beginning, you know, whether they're just general public or, you know, people with kids or, you know, whatever the school system, of course, and the property office as well. So all, again, that's, that's where we kind of want to get this rolling because we probably won't see construction until this time next year, but might as well get this out and get it going because we didn't anticipate K14 taking this long as it has. So that's why we're bringing it to you there tonight and so.
So if there's retaining, if they're going through areas that need to retain, we'll, we'll have.
Yeah, we talked about how we're going to do that.
Okay. That's not like they're, they'll have a.
I move that we agree with your lobby.
It's moved by Councilman Miller that we approve the Schwab Eaton Safe Routes to School contract not to exceed $35,000. And I have a second from Councilman Peterson. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the fire truck bid for emergency fire equipment in an amount of $355,059. Comments, questions for Chief Miller or former Chief Rug or whoever. This will take how long? Six months or so before this is done?
Well, it stated honor before 333 days.
Okay.
So it's, it's a ways out.
It takes a while. So how much do we have in our funds from our one mill?
Well, we don't have 315 or $300,000. So we are going to have to finance part of this. I know we have some other grant money over, so we're looking at at least 200,000 on funding this. The way this would work is either through lease purchase through one of the banks or talking with our financial advisor. What we could do here is do short term because we know what this is now. You can do like a year, like we, pretty much what we do with the street project of the north campus, do a year, 18 months temporary financing. Once that project is completed, which we'll talk about a little bit later on, how far along we are there. And once we do East Main, because we'll also have temporary funding on that, we can do the same thing with here and then we could actually put all three of those into the same permanent bond issue going out, whatever years those are going to be with that interest rate. So all three of those projects would all be together probably within two years. And that'd be the way to actually bond all three of these at the same time. But right now, we'll, we'll need to do a temporary, which we'll, we'll need to work that out in the next month or so. Probably with a local bank here and then basically do a permanent going forward. I think that's probably the best way to proceed with this, but no, we don't have 300 and some odd thousand in cash right now. Glenn, you have a question? Are you thinking then that it might be a month yet before we can sign the contract? Yeah, I think so. We really need to have that, yeah, that agreement, the cash before you, you know, before you can actually do that. So, but we can get that moving. As long as we know what this is right now, we're going to be able to beat it. So if you approve it here tonight, we can, we can approach the bank with that exact number.
This truck is, I understand, is kind of a mandated update that we have to develop to offer.
Well, the truck is replacing 30, is 30 years old. And if you've ever been around them, when they get to that age, they, they need to be replaced.
Does it have an effect on our people's insurance or anything here? Does that just kind of fall right in on it?
We were just reviewed by ISO here just recently and we stayed the same as we have been. And for us to change or to get a better rating from ISO, there'd have to be a significant amount of changes done to increase, to get a lower rating, probably like a manned apartment. Somebody, somebody on, you know, somebody up there all the time.
I'm sure 30 years, there's a lot more bells and whistles.
You have a question? Entertained a motion to approve the fire truck bid. It's been moved by Councilman Peterson that we approve the fire truck bid for the amount of $315,059. I have a second. Second by Councilman Gengler. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a new police vehicle, a new used police vehicle, a 2011 Chevy Tahoe. In fact, the amount of $13,550. Trade is $7,000.
Is this the direct money purchase?
Well, it's, it's actually split. This is a little bit tricky here because we do have currently a Tahoe, which we want to trade in and they're going to get a $7,000 for that. We know that they've got a vehicle for the 13.5 out there, so we're needing $6,500. What we're going to do then is split between just their normal vehicle fund of $5,000 and a $1,500 on the truck. So we need to see your 65. So the 60, yeah, 65.5 is the actual total amount.
How much you going to?
Split between those two funds. And that's, we anticipate probably our current K9 working for another couple of years. So we figured that this used Tahoe would probably be good for another couple of years and then after that we'll decide what we want.
What's wrong with you wanting to get?
It really has a transmission problem. It's probably going to.
What about this?
Uh, good shape.
What about the transmission?
Good, good shape, yeah.
You sure of that?
Yep.
You looked at it.
Oh, I haven't. And if I didn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't tell you. You know, it really would do a lot of good. Donnie probably helped us out here. Not, not me, but yeah.
It's a radio thing.
They, no, it's actually, yeah, and, and the problem, actually the real problem with the K9 you now have, the Tahoe, is not a police vehicle. It's a standard civilian and it's had electrical problems from really the start. It's not, it's not what made the handle with all the trucks we have there. But the one we are now is what, it's, it's just a better vehicle. And if we get a couple more years, I will, we'll get a lease that out. But, uh, like I said, with the K9, probably another couple of years with that, as a K9 unit, we'll have to revitalize their program after that. And see where the market wants to go, but another couple of years.
Do we still have a K9?
We do. We do have a K9, yeah. We have one, one K9 unit. This is, you know, the unit that.
Sure.
They do have one. They have one and we have one. So we're pretty much covered. Now will be the discussion we'll probably have in a few years, if they've still got their K9 and we've got ours, we continue on. So, and as you knew, the vehicles, you did the training, you have officer committed the K9.
This is my question for Dave. How many miles every year do you put on this vehicle?
The current, the current K9 vehicle has 160,000 miles. The one we're replacing has 80.
How many miles a year do you put on the vehicle?
It really depends on how often the K9 gets called out from its regular shift. The K9 officer works inside shift, so you're looking at probably 40,000 a year. Thank you.
Any other questions? No other further questions. I entertain a motion to purchase the 2011 Chevy Tahoe for $6,550. It moved by Councilman Latrell that we purchase the 2011 Chevy Tahoe for $6,550 and seconded by Councilman Addy. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the LEC parking lot for the amount of $22,900 and with the cost to the city of $11,450 and splitting the cost of this for the church.
Is this parking lot going to be solely for use by law enforcement or is that going also used to open to the library?
It'll be law enforcement. Which will.
Is that a parking lot?
No. No. Right. This is a question from Chief. Yeah, the parking lot they were recommending gets us out of the schools and the libraries' parking lot so that we have emergency response. We don't have issue with.
This will free up parking for the lot.
This one's moved. The parking lot on the north side of the LEC with the exit onto the hall.
Chief, will this, will that be signed and posted that it's for law enforcement use on?
Yes. Yeah. So you just directly access the hall. Right out of the parking lot. Say, and then the hall, the parking lot.
No.
No. No, see this, this is the east side. If there's any, well, it's right here. It's just a lot right there. Right now, that's the whole home out through here and it's really not.
Are we going to do all the work or?
Yes.
We're splitting the ass.
We're splitting with the, the cloth and the concrete. We'll be.
But we'll do all the labor.
We're liable for that.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll, we'll install it. So, yeah. And they want to do this, of course, for about four years now. They've been on board as well as everybody else, so.
Mark's not a fan?
Yeah.
It's a pretty good deal.
I move that we approve the LEC parking lot. It's been made by Councilman, so that we approve the parking lot and split the cost 50 to 50 on the concrete with the, uh, handling the search department for $11,450 and seconded by Councilman Addy. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the construction of an impound lot for towed and seized vehicles for approximately $7,500. Chief, where's this going to be located?
Uh, currently where they, uh, the old city dock where they store the telephone poles and stuff like that.
Okay. Any other, any questions for Chief Bill? No further questions. I entertain a motion to approve the impound lot for $7,500. It moved by Councilman Addy that we approve the impound lot for $7,500 and a second. Seconded by Councilman Richard. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same. Motion carries. So many. Have no closed sessions, so we have a motion to adjourn. Have no closed sessions, so we have a motion to adjourn. Councilman Brown, seconded by Councilman Richard. No further discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. We adjourn. Doug, yeah, if you need to, if you want to, I see you have your group of scouts here or you want to address the council of anything, we appreciate your comment.
Yes.
How about you fellows come up and introduce yourselves?
Follow this trail.
Didn't tell you about this. Just find the microphone and say who you are while you're here. This is Shorgus. It's Kristen, you can start.
I'm Kristen Armstrong. Army Corps Troop Ninety Eight, I'm the loyal scout troop.
Cameron?
I'm Cameron Conkle and I'm here to, in my.
Community citizenship.
Community citizenship.
I'm getting our family there and I'm citizenship including.
I've been required after the citizenship and community.
We want to thank you, young men, for coming out and sharing this evening with this other meeting and keep up the good work.
I mentioned, just for publicity, but also appreciation, because it's a public forum, VFW has been the chartered organization for Troop Ninety a long time and chief with the Fire Department, but also commander with VFW, Charles Wright, has been the, oh, main contact for the troop for several years now. But they've been an avid loyal supporter and there's been support from them as well as from the troop. And I don't know how many times Willie Collins, who's the scout master, has been down there worshiping issues, but he's been there a lot.
A lot.
Probably eaten some pie too.
Give us a lot of, well, we hide it.
They might have pitched me out.
I'm simply the troop treasurer. Raynell is the assistant scout master and Willie's the scout master and two or three others as leaders aren't here and probably another dozen boys. But these are the guys who are sort of having to take notes tonight, so, because they're working on this particular activity. We'll thank all of you for assisting these young men. Katie, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, Glenn, you have something you want to talk about?
I do have a number of things, but I made a point here tonight, we have one of our employees here, Mr. Cruz, wanted to talk about the change, possible change of our uniform policy here, so thank him. Come up and address us here about what you're thinking about as far as.
Hi there. I'm Pat Cruz, I work for Transportation Department. I would like for you guys to consider changing the policy on being able to wear shorts to work. I went to the insurance company, I've got it right here, there's no liability. It's up to you guys. This is from Bouts, you can look at it. What I was considering is something in the nice, not blue jeans with looks like terrible, something that, that looks nice, that's cooler. It might not be good for all the departments, but for our department where we work outside all day long, in the heat, in the humidity, something to think about.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is your plan to bring two sets of clothes?